Meeting will be called to order at 6:32, and will everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, as we start, we're going to have an introduction here that John will lead us through. We have a new assistant planner. So, Mr. Coleman?
I just wanted to take a moment to introduce Nicole McGowan, our new assistant planner. Nicole has been with us for over a month, I think, already, and if you attended the Joint City Council Planning Commission meeting a couple of weeks ago on the first of the month, Nicole was there then, too, so I think she's met some of you already, but I just thought, since there's someone new sitting next to me, I should take a moment to introduce her before we get the show on the road here. I don't think that...
Nicole, it's great to have you onboard. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
We'll save the grilling her with questions about her personal life till another time.
We grill around here, you bet. So, have everybody had the ability to review the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Any comments?
Should we do a roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, this is a different format. So, present are myself, Joe Fatisi, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Freiburger, and Commissioner Fernet online, Commissioner Maddox, Commissioner Penno are presently not here, however, I did, and Commissioner Huggins is not here. Commissioner Huggins and Penno did check in that they would not be here, so we do have the potential for Commissioner Maddox to be here shortly or soon. So, back to the...I apologize, back to the minutes?
I motion to accept the minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
The motion carries. Minutes are approved from the July 20th, 2021 meeting. So, do we have any general comments that I believe people can either send via email or people here that would like to make any comments in the audience? We have one gentleman sitting here, or anyone else online?
These are for items that are not on the agenda for today.
Correct, general public comments.
Staff did not receive any via email, I just went and checked.
Okay, so I will close the general public comments at 6:35, and we started at 6:34. So, we don't have a public hearing on the agenda, no unfinished business, so on to new business. Requested amendments to the urban village mixed-use parking regulations that I believe we are all in possession of the letter from the RJ Group with a BYK addition to it. So, do we have someone who would like to speak with us regarding that?
I think just to get us rolling on this, I'll do a brief introduction and kind of explain, not the request itself, but just how we should proceed. So, we received the request, and I'm sure everybody thoroughly read the memo and the request for updates to parking in the urban village. Staff put together a memo talking about, you know, the UVMU and when the regulations were originally put together. So, if the planning commission would like, I can give a more full background. The intent of today's meeting was to talk to the planning commission, let them know that this issue is out there, it's a request that you're going to be reviewing, help you understand it, and then not make any recommendations today, but to offer our services to find any additional information that you would like before you hold a public hearing and, of course, before making any recommendations on this. So, today was just intended to educate the planning commission more about the issue and find out if there's any additional information that the planning commission wanted to hear about this before the next meeting, and then we can decide after today's discussion whether we would have a public hearing on this at the next meeting, or if you want to see amended drafts before we go to a public hearing. So, I'll just ask, would the planning commission like me to explain this topic anymore, or does everybody have a pretty good idea of what's going on here? If there's any questions at all, I'm happy to talk about, you know, the UVMU, the process that we went through to create the UVMU. I think a lot of the planning commission members were part of that, so I wasn't planning on giving a whole lot of spiel about that because I think you were all here.
Okay, so, just to add into that, so not only were we present for the development of that code, it was code that was very, very, not only time-consuming, since it was new, I believe we went above and beyond any call of duty to actually try and get something right on version 1.0. Let's call it version 1.0, simply because when I looked at what we actually put together, and we are really excited to see the product that comes out of this, based upon the letter that I read, I would like to add into things later on, and I'll pass it around. We'll start with Commissioner Fernet first, so he can get on after we're done with this. If anybody here needs additional explanation, please, please state that now. I do not. Commissioner Freiburger, do you need anything? Nope. Commissioner Johnson, nope. Commissioner Fernet? Commissioner Fernet?
No, I do not, thank you.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to start with Commissioner Fernet, and Commissioner Fernet, you received a letter, you were part of the UVMU development, what are your thoughts?
Well, my thoughts are, way back when we did this, we didn't plan for a whole lot of parking, and from what I'm reading, there's complaints about too much parking required, so I am looking forward to hearing about it.
Commissioner Freiburger?
Well, I have a couple of questions, I guess, to clarify, and I'm not sure, I'll ask you, John, on this, and redirect me if I'm misinformed, but right-of-way parking can't be designated because it's not, it's public right-of-way, is that correct? So, because that is one of the two options that are being asked for here.
Correct. Any parking that's going to be on-street, and, you know, maybe I'll take a moment to describe the difference between, in our code, we talk about on-street parking and off-street parking. On-street parking would be anything that is in the public right-of-way, you know, along the side of the street. Off-street parking means something that's going to be on the site of development, so it could also be called onsite development. So, that would be on the private land. So, if, you know, the way our code looks at it is, you know, you can't designate the public right-of-way on-street parking for your development, that belongs to the community, it doesn't belong to the adjacent landowners, and so, you know, the city doesn't have the ability to say it belongs to anybody, so it belongs to everybody. So, it's difficult to allow on-street parking to be counted towards off-street parking regulations, because nobody has any control over that on-street parking.
And my second question is, this shared parking agreement, has that been done in other places, and has it been successful in other similar situations here or in other towns? I would be interested to know.
I think that's one of the things that staff should research and to help find that out. Before we get too far along with our discussion, I think these, it might be nice to hear from the request stores of this. I'm looking online, and I see Paul Woodman C. is a signature on this. I can't see who else is...Bill, could you show the attendance list? I can only see 1, 2, 3, 6 people. Oh, that's all of them, so, yeah, so it looks like Paul's the only one here that has signed on this, so I'd like to give him the opportunity to speak about this before we get too far along. But, yeah, let's mark that particular question down. I just think in general, as staff, we intend to research some of these and see what other cities have done, and I would love some assistance from the requesters also to provide information about, you know, other shared parking agreements and just, and parking requirement numbers in other jurisdictions similar to Seadro Woolley's Urban Village.
You know, just to add into what Danielle just asked, and that's what struck me as well, that suggests that there are two separate independent parties making a decision. In this particular case, in all the cases, it is one individual group making all decisions. See, there's got to be like a buyer-seller kind of arrangement, or an HOA and a property manager kind of thing, and when I looked at it, and that's a creative way of looking at it, but that suggests that there's two independent people that actually have the authority to negotiate for that particular resource, and that was pretty light on those details. There's got to be two separate independent people, and I don't see that at all.
Okay, so, yeah, I'll make note of that to look, these are the kind of questions, kind of things we want to look into, is like, what questions do you have that we could research deeper?
Paul, would you like to take the floor now?
That's great, I don't, did it, me unmuting, did that work, or?
Yeah, you're good, if you don't mind introducing yourself.
Okay, yep, my name's Paul Woodman C., president and owner of BYK Construction. RJ Group and us, I'm not going to speak on behalf of them, but we did write this joint letter. I brought up a few issues. We have a project on trail road that we're planning right now, that we're working through the CEPA process, and we've turned in our final drafts for our civil architectural and everything. So, this won't really benefit us now, because we're kind of already through the process, but it could benefit projects in the future. What we ran into on our site specifically was, we have one side of our site that's a heavy, heavy commercial, and there's no parking in front of it that's on our property because the buildings have to be, they're required to be within, I think, 10-foot of the setback of the property line. Well, when you do that, you have no commercial parking at all. And then, at the same time, we're also giving the city right-of-way and creating parking on our dime for the city. So, this would be parking that's not actually built right now, it's actually parking that we're building in the city right-of-way, and it's adjacent right in front of the commercial parking, or for the commercial space. So, what actually happened in our side is, since we can't count parking spaces that are in the right-of-way for, against the commercial parking requirement, not against the residential parking requirement, but the commercial parking requirement, it actually forced us to take away, as part of our green space for our lot, we actually lost a large part of our park for our lot, and in the end, for us, it didn't give us any additional parking that our residents or we felt our businesses would need, because when a company, or when a retailer, or restaurant, or whoever ends up in these buildings have a customer come, they're going to park as close to the commercial as they can. They're going to try to park out on the street in the right-of-way, they're not going to park behind our building and then walk around the building to get to the retail space. So, it just seemed like that was a simple solution. I think there's several ways to fix this, and part of that could be that, you know, if a property owner wants to count it towards their parking count, they have to maintain it, maybe they have to manage the spaces as well, you know, and we've been working on this in some of our other locations and how we're managing parking, and it's starting to work pretty heavily. It's creating a better system for us, and basically, you know, it's up to the property owner to tow away vehicles, or it's up to the property owner to manage their residence parking and where they're parking. And if we, if we look at this and really practically, we are over, we have great parking requirements for the residents, and the code is a good amount, in fact, we petitioned for the actual amount, because we felt like it was matched our Rita Street project almost 100%. But I think we're, when we add in the commercial requirement on top of the residential, and there's no crossover, you know, there's rare, there's not much crossover in terms of counting them together, then we end up over-parking our spaces, and in, we're in a world where we're trying to not have as many impervious surface, right? We're trying to, like, limit us covering the earth, and so, it's kind of hits from a few fronts, and so, it's just something that we wanted to reach out, and hopefully it's something you all would, you know, at least review and get some thoughts down on paper. I do want to point out, I think you guys did a great job with the UVMU code, it's a great start, it's part of Seadro Woolley as a whole, taking on the fact of the matter that we need affordable housing in our community, and it's something that I, you know, tell people often, that is definitely a win on Seadro's side, when they can create an environment in which housing can be built, and affordable housing can be built, and new commercial space can be built at the same time. So, thank you for your time, and let me comment.
Yeah, I have a question for you, and by the way, that was a great summarization, and you filled in a whole bunch of blanks that I had the same questions on, because, as you know, I'm living on downtown 48, and I've gone on my third year, so I see the whole parking issue, because I live it, right, and since I have a lot of flexibility in my schedule, I get to see the whole ebb and flow and how the dynamics actually work. But in this particular case, on your commercial allocation, so to speak, okay, it's a site-specific kind of thing, are you talking on the south side of the property? Because I'm really super familiar with exactly where you guys are going, where you would join the lube, what do you call it, Shell Station back end?
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay, thanks. So, Commissioner Johnson?
I don't really have any comments at this point, but I do thank BYK for sharing their thoughts, and they definitely did fill in some of those gaps. You know, we did work really hard on this, and, you know, I full well know what the intent of it was, because we spent better part of, over a year on it, but, you know, it's something that I'm open to discuss, but not necessarily fully committed to changing.
Okay, so that would put me up next. So, I've given this a lot of thought, and simply because I'm one of those types of people, since this is my industry, and it's something that I'm very passionate about, especially what we have going on here in the city, and it's basically where we started this journey, to when that letter landed in front of me, so I want to make something really, really clear, and I want this on the record. It was the RJ Group that pretty much came up with the proposal for an overlay that we welcomed, right? There were issues on financing, the type of product, modifications to densities, all that stuff. Not only did we spend a lot of time, we invited the RJ Group to the table, to the table. They were here every meeting. Commissioner Chairman Johnson, at that time, we were very polite, we included them in the entire discussion, and we worked through this together, including allowing them to work in the city with you, Planning Director Colby, to try and get out a great product here. So, anyway, I was kind of shocked at the end of the day, is to looking at something that I felt like they were disenfranchised, where they were not disenfranchised, they were a member to make a true public-private venture here. So, here's the thing, when I did read that letter, okay, the UVMU is not going to eliminate people in cars, and the downtown 48 is a clear example of pretty much what this is going to look like. People still, because of our location, will drive cars. Additionally, we were instructed and basically told that the Downtown Business Owners Association had an issue with doing like an east-west style kind of thing to separate the city, and people are still going to need to go to the food pavilion, they're going to need to go to the pharmacy, we just don't have it. So, this particular allocation, especially on the residential parking, works for us. It was not intended to keep people prisoner in this one little 20-something acre section of UVMU, potential UVMU, because maybe people will do it, people won't, but at the end of the day, it was a calculation that worked for us, plain and simple, and it was debated, and the parking issue comes up all the time. And why I think, in my experience in living in the downtown 48, people right now, it's an ebb and flow. That letter was static, okay, it's an ebb and flow. We have people that get up, we have contractors, we have all different compositions of family, which was mentioned by one of the council members at our joint meeting a couple of weeks ago. So, even though the numbers are there, which, by the way, when I looked at our table 1721 0901, this is less required than what we have in the R-15. We don't even have any overflow parking specified for the UVMU. So, you want to know what? People will absolutely be parking on the street, because that's exactly what they do now. So, the E&amp;E lumber sign that Paul's familiar with, okay, they park, we have all kinds of people, right? So, we have a contractor that has a van, you got people that are there for their cars, and I want to say, at least once a month, if I come back after 10 o'clock, there is no parking, and people were parking on the commercial side, which all of a sudden, the property manager comes back and says, hey, they're parking in our space, then you're going to start towing people. We do not want conflict. However, for the residential side, that number is spot-on. It's spot-on because I've been living it for the past three years. Now, one thing that came out of that joint council meeting as well, there were a lot of council members that were very adamant to say, projects have got to support their own parking. So, Paul, I get the commercial side, yeah, that should be up for negotiation, you're right, because there is an ebb and a flow. People are gone during the day, so there's a lot of parking for all kinds of things going on. But on the residential side, given the composition of households, I'm really not too open at all, myself could change that, because I see it and I live it every day, and it's some of the direction that the council members shared with us just barely a couple of weeks ago. So, that's all I have to say, and again, we will be discussing it in future meetings. Thank you. So, would you like me to move on to new business item number two?
Well, I'd like to clarify if there's any sort of guidance. I have...
Can I say one other thing, John?
Yes, you can.
I just want you all to know, there was no, if this letter read in terms of being disenfranchised or feel like we weren't part of the, you know, conversation, that's not how it's supposed to read, so I apologize for that. Really, there's, we were all part of the UMPU, I was heavily involved as well, and in terms of how, not just, you know, I would consistently review it and send comments in and everything, so this is something that is sometimes really hard to catch, though. You know, you're kind of reading, you're reading through things, and you're looking at code, and then you don't really sit down and like, you know, at the time, we're not planning a project, so it can become very project-specific with this, and I think you kind of brought that up, Commissioner Fatisi, that, you know, it can, you often won't see a problem until it's right in front of you, you know, in terms of planning. So, I want you to all know to know that, that, you know, this wasn't written in a way, you know, to try to say that we were unhappy with the process or not part of it, by no means would either one of us, at least on my point, I would never say that. I think that we had a very great open process for the UVMU planning, so that's all.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I wanted to give the planning commission the opportunity to ask any, for any additional resources or information about this topic before bringing it back next, to the next planning commission meeting. I'm not hearing that the planning commission's making any recommendations for amendments to their proposed amendments at this point, so I'm not getting the feeling that we're ready for a public hearing next time, but I'll be bringing more information about how does a shared parking agreement work, if we can find any successful examples, provide other jurisdictions' parking standards to look at, to see if any, and to see how our residential allotment and commercial allotment compare to other UVMU-type projects in other rural cities. I don't know how many rural cities are going to have UVMU's, but we'll do what we can to find some comparable parking standards, and we probably did that as part of the UVMU, I'm sure, when we originally developed it, and then look into any other jurisdictions that allow on-street parking to count towards any sort of on-street, off-street parking requirements, see if anybody else does that.
You know, here's my issue with that, people are going to be parking on the street anyway. This is exactly what happens now. You'll have, let me give you just a really easy situation. You have a family, teenage kid drives, wife has a car, dad has a car, he needs a car, okay? A lot of times, they say, you're going to park on the street. People come on over to socialize, dinners, whatever, people will be parking on the street. And looking at the density, just even on the RJ Group project, that's 71 units, that's going to be the largest project ever built in this city. So, and we don't even have any overflow parking specified on that table, which I'm shocked that we missed, and if I look at that and compared to the R-15, it's a pretty generous allotment as far as what you don't provide. So, it's not like, you know, we're throwing this stuff out there. Parking is a big deal, and the mayor and council made it really clear, at least in a meeting that Danielle and I were at just a couple of weeks ago, that parking has got to be a priority. And where these projects are going, specifically the RJ Group project, you have competing resources for parking for the school district and athletic facilities and everything on the other side of the street. We just don't want to get a situation where, all of a sudden, you have people looking to park to do their normal day-to-day thing, and all of a sudden, there's no parking because it's overflowing from a massive project, by our standards, anyway. And that's the only thing that I want to throw out there. Also, you know, looking at the commercial and the residential side as different animals, yeah, there is an ebb and flow, so there is a lot of parking available during the day on the residential side, and we actually do have overflow coming from the commercial side, because you recognize people's cars every single day, it happens. That should be fine, there should be a balance on something like that, not a hardcore kind of thing, but it depends on the businesses that are in there. You might have somebody wants to open about 5:00 in the morning and close at 10:00 at night, and we don't know what that composition's going to be right now, none of us do. So, thank you.
If I might add, you know, one thing that's always been consistent over the past 10 years I've been on the planning commission is parking, and there never seems to be enough of it. of it. So my philosophy is kind of always turn into, always err on the side of too much parking rather than too little parking. I am very much willing to hear RJ Group out and BYK, and, you know, it was a massive project, so I could very well see where this would be an area that could get overlooked by all those involved. You know, it was an open process, and we did nitpick on some areas, and, and, you know, it just might have gotten lost in the shuffle. One thing that I'd kind of be curious about, and I'm curious with the Planning Commissioners to see whether it would be informational enough to factor in, is I know that we talked about this kind of being a, its own downtown node. I remember we talked a lot about downtown nodes, that with many municipalities, there's kind of like this, this new trend towards, you know, maybe having one central downtown, but you have numerous other ancillary downtowns as well. And this is kind of removed from the, the major commercial area of Woolley, and isn't exactly readily accessible to it by foot. And we had made mention, and, you know, it's, it's been a little while, and there's been a lot of stuff that we've talked about this since, but I know that we had made mention about the impact of public transit on this area as well. And I don't know if there's information that we can get as far as, you know, whether or not transportation with a decrease in available parking would become helpful. I realize that we're kind of in a community, Skagit County as a whole, not just Woolley, but Skagit County as a whole, isn't exactly a mass transit-centric, you know, area, unlike, say, Seattle or Everett or the like. But, you know, I don't know if mass transit would have any sort of benefit to residents in this, because it is gonna be a very large development, and it's gonna be attracting, what I believe, and it's, it's yet to be seen, but it could attract younger working professionals who do tend towards the use of mass transit, along with Uber and, and other things. But I don't know if that's, if there's particular areas or if there's information that would be available. I know that we just kind of touched on it, we didn't really dive into it very deeply. And maybe it's, it is because public transit really isn't that big of a player currently within the greater Skagit County area, but, you know, that, that may be information that would be helpful, too. And if we're gonna dive back into this, I think having all the information available would be helpful.
On that note, I would be interested, is there a bus stop near there currently?
Actually looking that up right now. I believe it goes down Highway twenty. I'm not sure if it goes, I'm not sure if it goes up Trail Road yet. But, you know, the way bus service works is they, they go to where the people are, so they amend their routes regularly. If this becomes a place where there's a lot of need, where they see there's a lot of need, then they can route theirs, instead of just going straight down twenty, for example, maybe they'll go up Stendal, or go up Hodgins to Stendal, and then back down Trail, or back over to Cook Road or something, and pick this up along their line.
They do have a bus stop on, on Trail Road, that's that smaller bus, because it used to stop right in front of seven oh nine. So it was a regular designated bus stop, and it actually went down to concrete.
So the three oh, the three hundred goes-
That's the big one, yeah. That goes down to Burlington.
Oh five go through town. The three hundred just goes straight by it and doesn't go up Trail Road. The-
This was a smaller bus.
Sorry, fat fingers touched the wrong button, everything went haywire. Let's see what the three oh five does. And like I said, these are, these change. No, three oh five doesn't go anywhere near there. It just starts at the Park and Ride at the roundabout area on Ferry Street and goes south down nine. So I don't think any routes go through there now, but one does go down Highway, Highway twenty, right past there, and could possibly roll by that area in, in the future.
Kind of going off what Commissioner Fatizzi said, just from the residential side of things, theoretically, you know, you would maybe hope that if there was less parking available, there would be less vehicles, but that's not how it works. People just tend to park on the street if they don't have designated parking in their apartment complex. I know that's true where I live. So if it's shared with commercial, you know, people have jobs at all different times of the day, and businesses, I think that was already kind of mentioned by one of the Commissioners, you know, have different operating hours. So definitely interested to see if this has worked elsewhere for shared, shared parking. Because people aren't driving their vehicles all the time, even during the day. There might be one, one person who works away, one person who works down the street and walks and leaves their vehicle there all day, so that would not be relevant then for a commercial space to use that spot, so.
At the end of the day, living where we live, people are not giving up their cars. We're four miles in, people are still gonna go to Costco, they're still gonna go to Target, having nothing at all to do with walkability. And what's great for me is, I literally have the perfect UVMU, if you really think about it. I could walk across the street to the Pioneer Market, and I do not care about the cost of tomatoes. Metcalf is right there, that's what we're kind of seeing, but we don't have that amount of space there to handle something like that. But people are not gonna give up their cars. They still have to pick up groceries, things like that, and sometimes I drive just right across the street, because I have things to haul around. We are, we are an automotive-dependent community up here. It might work in Seattle or some other places, but up here, people like to get to the outdoors. Anyway, that, that, let's move on. If there's anything else, we can go on to CPA.
Do you want to give Joe Fatizzi or Fernanda a chance for any closing-
I'm sorry, I didn't know he had his hand up, I couldn't see.
Well, the only, my question is, in downtown Metcalf, on-the-road parking, is that shared parking, or is that public parking like you were describing elsewhere?
All the, all the parking downtown in Metcalf, State Street, everywhere, everywhere in town is public parking. It's not, it's not designated for any of the associated businesses or residences.
Except for my parcel that I own, it's the second-largest parking lot in the whole city that gets used every day by downtown businesses and employees and, you know, people using other people's businesses. So not all parking downtown is owned by the city. Our facility gets used all the time.
You're talking about the, at the Frontier, at the Frontier Marketplace, people use that as like a de facto city parking lot? People just park there all the time when they can't find parking where they-
During the day, yeah. Yeah. And I would just, I wanted to say something also, that the parking in Cedar Woolley is a city problem, too. It's, you know, we have a downtown area that has barely any parking lots. And we really, as a city, and need to come up with a plan on how we want to build some sort of additional parking for the businesses downtown. There's no doubt about that.
And that's agreed, by the way. We're, we're working on that, the whole downtown, we're looking at pretty much everything, and parking is absolutely at the forefront. And that's coming from council members as well. I mean, right down to the size of some of these, you know, pickup trucks, oh my God, they're, they're massive, they actually push out into the middle of the street. We get it, oh yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Well, continuing with that theory I started, if you have a business on Metcalf, where are, where is their parking requirements? Behind them in the alley, or where are they supposed to park?
Well, the downtown is a whole different, whole different ball of wax, because it's the existing city system with, with existing buildings. So we, last year, the Planning Commission did a, a big update to the downtown parking standards to address just that. So what the Planning Commission recommended, what the City Council adopted, was any new buildings in the CBD have to provide parking pretty much similar to the UVMU development Except for small buildings in the very core downtown, you know, say, you know, where the, the building that burned at the corner of Metcalf and Woodworth, you know, the Planning Commission recognized that, you know, a small lot like that, if they were to provide six parking spaces for three residential units, that would actually take up half of their property. So it really would quell the ability for that property to be developed. So they had some reduced parking standards for small lots right in the, the town core. But otherwise, but otherwise, in the rest of the, the CBD, the, the parking standards are similar to the UVMU.
Okay. And does the city have any fund growing for acquiring parking lots? No. So that's not in the planning at all?
No. In the past, it's been providing parking in the downtown. CBD has been part of the Downtown Association, which is part of the Chamber of Commerce to address. And that's how those, a couple of the parking, the public parking lots in town were previously purchased.
Thanks, Paul, for the explanation, and I understand what you're trying to do, and can't quite wrap my head around it just yet.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah. Yeah.
Joe, sometimes I can't see you from here, so I apologize for, for not including you, because I, I just thought you were done, so.
No problem.
You do need to speak up. Are we ready to move on? I guess that's a yes. So on to item number two, CPA one dash twenty-one dash two thousand twenty-one, comp plan amendments.
All right.
Moving along.
So this is our annual comp plan amendment process. CPA one dash twenty-one is, is a, collectively, all of the rezone requests that the city has received as part of the twenty twenty-one comprehensive plan update cycle. CPA one dash twenty-one also happens to be the only item on the twenty twenty-one docket. So there are no other requested changes to the comprehensive plan, any, you know, nothing to the land use element, no transportation plan updates this year. So all we have are, is, as part of the twenty twenty-one update, is these, these two rezone requests. There are two, as I said, one of them is, is actually from the twenty twenty docket. That's the, the golf course rezone, we also refer to it as the Ruby rezone. That's a request to change the zoning designation of roughly three-acre parcel that's at the golf course, at the northeast corner of the golf course, at Portobello and, and Fruit dale Road. That's roughly where the clubhouse is and the driving range, the, the, the driving end of the driving range. And the Planning Commission reviewed this at multiple meetings last year. They had two regular meetings and then two additional public hearings on it before making a recommendation to the City Council. The Planning Commission recommended three to two to approve this in, in last year's process. And then, once it went to the City Council, they had concerns about the recommendation, so they sent it back to the Planning Commission for further work. They were, I think, as part of this process, probably document better what the decision, what the, the reasons for the Planning Commission's decisions were, because they, they, there was comments that they were unclear how they, how the Planning Commission came to this decision, so I'll do a better job of documenting that. And there was obvious concerns about the, how wet the property out there in general is, and concerns about the, the property and it's, you know, because of the water, how is it gonna be developed? So we're gonna have the Planning Commission review it again this year. We'll go through similar process, since the Planning Commission's pretty well familiar with it. I'm gonna probably struggle to find any new or additional information, but we will run it through the process again and better document what the Planning Commission chooses. Last time the Planning Commission recommended approval, it was three to two, so.
I would like to add into that, okay? The reason it was-
Perhaps, maybe when we do have a final recommendation vote on this, we have more Planning Commission members here to vote. So with that said, we wanted to bring this back to the, to the Planning Commission and give the project applicant a chance to speak on it as well, and then get the Planning Commission's guidance on what to do next. Do you want to go straight to a public hearing and, and, and get final input on this? Do you want to have a bunch of public hearings? Do you want to, with only four Planning Commission members today, it's, it's hard to really get a gauge for how the Planning Commission wants to treat this, but there's not a lot of new information, so I just, I think really the important thing is that we get it out for public review again, and, you know, put public notice out that this is gonna be something that the Planning Commission is reviewing, and, and again, ask for comments, and just have a thorough documentation of the process for, to help the City Council understand the decision process. Do you want, so I do happen to know that the project applicant, Mr. Bob Ruby, is here today, so now would be a great time to talk, to allow him to speak, unless the Planning Commission wants to have any discussion ahead of that.
Yeah, I was the one that made the deciding vote. It was a split two-two, and I was the one that said it should move forward, and here's why. I didn't think the impact of those three acres, of what that rezone was looking to do, I, I thought it was less of a use than what that mixed commercial zone really provides. And when Mr. Ruby speaks in a few minutes, the MC zone is great. You, you can get up to eight units per building, and you have three acres, so in essence, you could eliminate some of the stuff you want to put on the area that floods and still get that density and put in a great product. So that's why I didn't have a problem with it, simply for the fact, I thought it was a downgrade of what he had available, and I- And I believe that was actually City Public Works that had an issue with stormwater and a whole bunch of different things. However, you could put a great project in that three acres, still get the density, still get the price points. So maybe Mr. Ruby, as we hear from him in a little while, consider that. MC is a good zone. You have a very captive audience as far as homeowners right there and you have a whole brand new complex going in with Duke's Hill that's going to be on the other side of Portobello or they're going to extend Portobello. So you're going to have a whole lot of housing units that the closest place that they can go to pick things up is pretty much the Rite Aid. So that mixed commercial zone provides a lot of opportunities for you in the end, including having the density of housing that you're looking to do as well. But that's why I voted for it because I thought it was just a lower use of what you can really do at the place. So I just want that on the record. So, Mr. Ruby, you have the floor. Oh, here you are.
I'm here.
Right.
Good evening, Bob Ruby. I'm principal in Granite Holdings, which has title to the property and has had for some time. Mr. Coleman has described it, I know you're familiar with it. I could stand here and give the dimensions and the area and how long one side or another is. It was, it did come out of the planning commission last year with a majority of votes in favor after some amount of time of discussion, went on to the city council. Mr. Coleman has explained that. I think what's different this year is that, given the comments from both this group and city council, is we did commission a study using a consultant out of the Seattle area and asked them what they felt was the best use of the property and why, and to give us some guidance and recommendations. And they came up with a report, I think, at the possible expense of being too simplistic. The idea that I immediately got in reading the executive summary is that the vast amount of traffic that goes north and south on Fruitdale Road is destination traffic. It ties in above at Highway nine, but people don't typically take that route as the scenic route to hit nine and go on north or vice versa. The residential, the, the majority of the, the, the traffic, the destination traffic has to do with the residential in that area. And the, and the idea is that people who will drive their cars from a commercial standpoint will pass it by, going south and then return home without having or seeing the need for commercial businesses that are there. Or to say it the other way, any hypothetical business that could be there, be it a gas station, a convenience store, some kind of auto mechanics, I mean, we ran the iterations out, would as likely not use that as a place to shop, do retail purchasing, have services provided, as compared to going on downtown and even over west to the I-5 corridor.
Can I hold you up for a second?
Sure.
So right across the street here, you have Abbott's Alley. Okay? That use, that live-to-work concept is available to you. Okay? And another thing, you know, I hear different consultants, but as a, as an individual that is just looking to grab a pizza or whatever, you have a large population of houses that if the, the right businesses are there, people are going to stop. But from a standpoint of, okay, you have to have the commercial on the bottom, but you have live-to-work options that was very successful across the street here. So it might be something that you want to examine because you have people that work out of the house, like I do a lot of work out of the house myself. And right now, with COVID and things, people are learning that they can work at home. Consulting firms, people that don't want to go anyplace, that is allotted to you with the thirty-five foot height. So you might want to take a look across the street and look at examples of other things that will give you the density you're looking for with the price points you're looking for with a smaller footprint, okay, that satisfies and fixes a whole lot of the problems on the other side. And that was my point. And that's why I said, okay, listen, I thought it was bringing it down, but take a look at that code. You have a lot of options there that I think you can be very successful in doing exactly what it is you'd like to do.
Okay. Because I, I, I know that that, that part was concluded with the idea that it, it also had to do with their results of economic viability with that traffic going through there, you know? As, as compared to housing, the aesthetics, the design, making it flow with the other type of housing that is proposed for the remainder of the property.
We're a little bit of a different animal up here in Skagit County and we've tried a whole bunch of different things, as you can see with the, the UVMU, what we did with the live-to-work examples. I'm just saying that you do have other, other options here that are not only very viable, but very desirable on top of that. And as a real estate broker, that I do this for a living, I disagree with that analysis. If you put the right business in, in a place, people are going to stop. Again, there, there's no place for all that housing up on top there. Plus, remember what you have going on right now. Northern State is now part of the Swift Center. So over time, that is absolutely going to be developed, that you're going to have a very captive audience, have a workforce up there that's going to need a sandwich shop. I don't care if it's a Jimmy John's or whatever, because that's going to be the closest place to go. All I'm saying is look at it, look at your options. This isn't the only option available as far as doing single-family residences, that's all.
Absolutely. No, and I, I appreciate it. And as a matter of fact, they did a fair amount of work with Northern State and their conclusion was, even one thing that came up was the idea or the possibility that people may be from out of the area in a professional capacity or for some other reason technical that would be working on a short-term basis as a result of contracting with companies or something. Meaning they, they would, they used a, a model that was not an employee of existing companies that were up there and suggested a hotel and, I mean, that, actually, that one was one, the idea was those people are presumably going to be running cars, they may be flying in and out of Sea Tag, driving up from Seattle and so forth. And if they do that, they're just going to bypass it and go on down, you know, to the east and the south anyway, for exactly those, you know, types of services, hotels and things like that. But that was the conclusion of that part of it, as far as Northern State. Really very little viability. And the idea was it was too far to walk conveniently for most people up there unless the weather is really great and they want to stroll from those building facilities down Fruitdale to go to a hypothetical sandwich shop there or something.
Depends on a sandwich shop. There's people that will drive from all over the place to go to the right place. And unfortunately, out here, people think Jimmy John's is a sandwich shop. I'm from the East Coast and I will tell you right now, if you put the right businesses there, people will find you. All I'm saying is you have options here and you've already heard what the council had an issue with as far as doing single-family residences. And it was more technical from what I understand as to why it came back and it more had to, it, it had to do more with water and facilities and things like that. All I'm saying is in that three acres, you have the ability to put the density in there with multiple options to still achieve your goals financially and a whole bunch of different things. You, you kind of got the best of both worlds here, but that MC zone, I don't know why people look past it. It's a great zone. Just saying. You're very unique up there, too. That, you're the only MC three acres in existence up there. I don't know. I'm going to think through that a little bit more myself, but you're, you're making a call.
Yeah. And that was the result of, you know, what we had, and we looked at several people and asked for qualifications as to, you know, why they felt they were best suited to, you know, doing that kind of work and doing the, you know, performing the study. So.
Up to Paul Woodmancy, I think Paul's got a whole bunch of ideas of what he would do at a site like that under an MC zone. Go on, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, with that, no, I, I appreciate, I appreciate the, the comments. It's, there's intrinsic value in the property where it is as it is, meaning its location and its present zoning. You know, the original idea was to have it so that it would flow with the whole residential network concept out there, single-family houses with yards. As far as wet, I, I know that had, had come up. I thought Mr. Coleman did a great job of that. We've since continued to work with our engineers and that water can be dealt with. I mean, that's just a engineering exercise for them. So it, it, it's the bottom of the hill there, that, that's true. And those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Fournette? Don't know.
I, I gotta push all the right buttons. I don't have any comment at this time, but thanks for the explanation.
So do you have a, a plan and alternative plans that you'd like to share? I mean, I think we look at ourselves as a resource here as well. So.
Well, and I appreciate the, we have held off in a big way going down that road to see, to present our case with our request that we, we would like to ask for the rezone and see what the thoughts of, of this body are in the city council.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to rezone requests.
Just, just to wrap up, I think what I'll do at the next planning commission meeting is put all of the information from the, basically put together a staff report, which will largely have the, the previous information from last year available for the planning commission to review. And should we hold a public hea, well, I want to get, I want to get the word out for, for public comments. So we'll, if, if we're going to do a public hearing at the next one, then we need to, I need, I need to get that word out soon. So I, I just trying to get an idea of when I'm going to start the, the, the public notification process.
I would prefer myself and let's run it around the table to see all that documentation ahead of time so we can make a more informed decision. How, how does everybody feel about that?
Well, that's kind of, that's kind of part of the process is with the public hearing, we get the word out so we can get people's comments.
But I thought you had staff, technical documentation on water and just, just things that came up on, on the last go-around.
Yeah, so I, I could provide that all as.
At the same time?
Yeah, as part of that public hearing. That doesn't mean that you need to make, the, the planning commission needs to make a recommendation at the next, if, if the public hearing, but at least we'll have the public comments on it. And I think we've got enough information about this project already that we don't need to do a whole lot more fact-finding before we present it to the public. So that's why I'm willing to have a public hearing at the next planning commission meeting on this particular rezone request.
And we'll have a couple of days to, to look through it prior to the public hearing anyway. I mean, everybody's going to get the pack at that Friday or Saturday when it's posted for everyone. That, that works for me. I'm fine.
Makes sense to me since we had a decent amount of public comment last time, so.
Yeah, I felt like, you know, for being a body that doesn't necessarily get a ton of public comment, that one did seem to have a noticeable uptick. So, yeah, the sooner we can get public notification out there, I think the better.
The more we have to consider, yeah.
Yeah. Prior to moving on, Commissioner Johnson is recusing himself from the following item, the rezone request number two oh two one dash zero three eight, Bucko. So this is the first time I've had a commissioner, or we've had a commissioner in my experience here, recuse themselves. So I think you have to go to the, to the back of the room and we'll send someone to get you when we're done. Is that correct?
Um, not necessarily. I, I don't know that that's been the past practice, but.
I have no idea.
It just, he's just not participating.
Okay.
I know we've done it on Zoom and nobody had to leave the room at that point.
Okay, no, no. I just don't know.
I can, I can check to see for future meetings if, if that's going to be preferred by our city attorney and what the, what the standard is. So should I get rolling on this one?
Get rolling.
Okay. So I found myself while trying to describe this property, flailing away while doing it in words. So the map speaks more than a thousand words in this case as I waxed on unpoetically about it having forty feet of frontage, not adjacent to the street. I just was having a hard time showing what the picture shows really well. This property is, has, has frontage on Cook Road, but it's only a narrow forty feet. And then it opens up to about five acres between two separate assessors parcel numbers and it's behind a row of properties along Cook Road. Combined with those properties along Cook Road, this property and those properties together are about ten acres of mixed commercial land. The request is to change the zoning of this property, these two properties owned by the Bucko family, from the mixed commercial to our residential fifteen. There's, there's, I feel like there's a lot of background on this, but there's, it's really quite a simple request at the same time. Some of the background is the, the property to the north of this, which is shown in a, in a map that probably isn't very easy to see on the last page of the memo before the appendices, was that page five? It's a, so the property to the north, which appears to be, I think it's about twenty acres, I, I apologize, I don't actually have that number in front of me, is part of the same family's holdings and they're doing a, and that's zoned R seven. And they're actively pursuing a residential subdivision of, I want to say sixty-four, sixty-four lots, a couple of those are duplex lots, so I think it's sixty-eight total units. This, the, the reason this is significant is right now, this property that's up for rezone is, you know, fairly landlocked, you know, without, without combining it with a project, with the properties to the south, you know, it, it's kind of a tough, tough spot to do any commercial uses, at least, you know, retail uses. However, as part of the subdivision happening to the north, a, the trail road arterial is going to go up that panhandle and along the west side of this property, thereby opening it up to regular arterial traffic, which makes it a more usable area for commercial. it up to, uh, regular arterial traffic, which, um, makes it a more usable area for commercial. And adjacent to, uh, a large residential development, which may or may not, um, impact the viability of it as a, as a residential use, much like we were talking about in the previous, with a large residential development right next door. You know, maybe there is more opportunity for, um, for mixed commercial uses to serve those areas, as well as, of course, providing, you know, in the mixed commercial zone, there is still the use, uh, ability to do, uh, multifamily above any commercial use. Some other things, the, just basic stats, like I said, the, the property to the south is currently mixed commercial. Uh, the property to the west is public, it's owned by the, the bus, it's owned by the school district and is their, their bus facility. So, um, kinda quiet neighbors in a way, except for when the buses start and come in and out every day. Property to the north is residential seven, and the property to the east is residential seven as well. Um, the request is that this property be rezoned to, um, to residential fifteen. Now, the residential fifteen zone is, um, there, there's no adjacent residential fifteen zoning to this, as you can obviously tell. There's some down the street and around the corner. And the, the residential fifteen zone uniquely says in its intent, and what I didn't put in this, but, uh, 'cause this is sort of a, just getting started on the project, but, um, it, it says there's, it says that, uh, there's no intent on the city to create any more R15 zoning. So, the, uh, two, uh, members of the Bucko family are here to talk about their request. I just wanted to give some of the background. Oh, and if you look on page four of the document, there is, it shows the zoning in the area and how it, uh, how it, uh, is, interacts with the adjacent zoning around it. So unless the planning commissioners, uh, commission has any specific questions for staff, um, I'd be happy to turn it over to, to you guys for discussion and, well, let the, let the Bucko family members have a chance to speak on this.
Do have a question. So, being a zone-conscious individual, we're looking at 5.2 acres, right? Times forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty. It's a total of two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, five hundred and twelve square feet. If we have a coverage, and I'm very conservative of my stuff, divided by point five, you're looking at a really significant amount of potential units going in there in addition to another massive project going in. I, I got about seventy-five.
Uh, your math may be a little, I think you said twenty-five, it's fifteen?
You got five point two acres, right?
Yeah.
Times forty-three, five sixty, 'cause I'm looking at the units.
Right, right.
So, divided by two, so that's fifty percent coverage, that's a hundred and thirteen thousand square feet of coverage. And in that zone, we can go thirty-five feet, I believe. So even it, you, you would get that max of fifteen per acre, so you're looking at another seventy-five units on top of what's going in next door.
So, the way, the way you look at it is, the way we do the math for the R15 zone is, is a little bit more simple.
Okay.
It's fifteen units per acre. So if you have five point two acres...
Right.
You multiply that times fifteen...
Yeah.
And that's seventy-eight.
Okay, that, that came up with seventy-five.
Came up with a similar number, but you did it much more difficult math.
You know, like I said, but I'm always conservative. But still, Cook Road at this particular point, plus you only have forty feet going in off of Cook Road, it's bad now, okay? We, between looking at the number of units going in to the north, if you rezone with another seventy-five, plus what you got going on in the UVMU, I'm coming up with another three hundred-plus, okay, housing units of some form or another. And let's just be really generous here and do even more conservative. Multiply that times two, and that, that's what you're looking at, the number of cars. So you're looking at like another six hundred cars in a very, very small area on some very limited access, uh, transportation, uh, network right now. So, that's the, that's my concern.
That, that, that are, that road is planned to be an arterial, so that will connect from Trail Road North up to the new Trail Road that goes, uh, through the subdivision that's being built on FNS Grade Road in between Jones and FNS.
They gotta go out on Cook.
So, but it...
I hear you.
The road going through here is part of the, the new arterial plan. It'll take many years for that to, that ar- full arterial to, to come to fruition, but the, and I'll have to put some information about what that arterial specifically looks like. It'd be the Jones John liner corridor going underneath, uh, the, the train trestle where there currently is no underneath the train trestle, going to, um, Jones Road, connecting to the, um, the new Trail Road, North Trail Road that is, uh, the Garden Meadows subdivision that is currently under construction, and then continuing south through a couple of other pieces of land that are as yet part of this project, through to these properties and connecting to Cook Road, creating an arterial route that bypasses I, uh, bypasses the Highway twenty, um, corridor to, to reduce the traffic on that Highway twenty corridor and, um, provide faster service. So it's a, it's a new arterial route, it's, it's quite a large development. So in theory, it could be one of our larger, um, arter- uh, larger, uh, traffic-carrying roads. But that'll be s- some years down the road, once the project is complete, the full arterial project is complete. And we can get traffic numbers for you, too.
But it will still increase traffic on Cook Road, potentially?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So I have a question for you, John. Um, you mentioned the R15 zone, which I pulled up here, and it says because multifamily is permitted in the mixed commercial and central business district zones, no new areas shall be designated R15. So will there have to be a code amendment in order for this?
In order to designate any new R15, I believe so, yes.
Yeah. So if the planning commission looks to go that route, then there will be a, okay.
That still goes up the line to the mayor and council to either approve or deny it, so...
Well, any, any change to the code about the R15, that, that intent part of it, is likely to be a comprehensive plan amendment? So, 'cause that's stated in the comp plan, the land use element, uh, about the R15. So, making that kinda change, it's likely, I, I, I don't know, I, I have to do some more research on that, but it, it may end up being its own comprehensive plan amendment process. But it's, you know, it, it, at the very minimum, it's a code change, so that would be a, a whole nother process.
No, just to add into that, I, I had a rezone in Auburn, and it was a comp plan amendment that had to get done to get a rezone from like, uh, an R7 to like, it's, it's like an R20. That, that's their multi-use zone down there, but it did require a comp plan amendment, definitely. I have a copy of it, too.
We still have yet to give the...
No, absolutely, I don't know, I'm done. Anybody else? Joe, any questions prior to the, uh...
Um, no, I just have a comment, um, kind of in line with what you've been discussing already. Uh, fifteen, eighteen years ago, when I wanted to rezone in Seidra Willie, there was a moratorium because the sewage treatment system wasn't up to snuff. So they waited until all that was in line, and then they opened the doors and everybody wanted to develop. And I, I see the next problem is flow to the freeway. On my way to work this morning, I stopped one point one miles from Highway twenty on Cook Road and waited ten minutes. On the way home, I stopped point nine miles from the light and waited fifteen minutes. That's my commute I get to enjoy. And when you're throwing all these houses up everywhere, I see it, you know, where is the road structures, where's the schools, where's the fire departments, where's, where's the infrastructure that's needed before we just say, "Okay, everybody build"? I, I don't, I don't get it. You know, where's the moratorium on this? That's bothering me.
No, the M-word was discussed in the joint, uh, council, planning commission meeting. I was really kinda sorry you guys weren't there, it was just, uh, myself and Danielle. But yeah, that, that, that word's getting pushed around a little bit. Tap the brakes. Okay, I'm sorry.
Is there any, is there any, I know a lot of it has to do with the state and has to do with the county and yada, yada, but is, is anybody working together to where pretty soon, we're gonna be waiting ten minutes in our driveways trying to get on the road if we don't do something?
So I, I do have a spiel about that, um, Joe.
Okay.
So what the planning department largely does is we, we do our comprehensive plan updates, and in two thousand sixteen, we, we did the, the comp plan updates to make sure that, um, all of our planned facilities can accommodate twenty years' worth of growth. And so we have, we had that factor, that four hundred, four thousand, five hundred and fifty-five new residents planned between twenty sixteen and twenty thirty-five. And as, as we, you know, we didn't just adopt that saying, "Hey, sounds good, like more people", whatever. It was, you know, the whole process was, can our poli- you know, what, where, what facilities do we have now, and what facility improvements will we need to make to accommodate that new growth? And so that's what our capital facilities plan, our transportation plan, our sewer plan, um, uh, and the land use element, and the, the entire comp plan, as well as various other, um, zoning codes and, uh, city policies are in place to accommodate for that planned growth. So we anticipate that the city is going to grow by that much, and we are, um, we are on target to, to do so. Right now, we're going through a bit of a spurt, so, you know, as we grow, I'm making a motion with my hand, but, um, as, as we grow, it goes in sort of waves, you know, tr- uh, high points and troughs, like, so we'll go, we're going through a, a fast growth period now, whereas we're coming out of a very slow growth period. So for the first four years of, uh, three of years of, uh, of our comp plan, uh, planning cycle, you know, twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, we're in a very slow growth period. Um, we didn't see a lot of housing. Now we're seeing a big spurt, so it's averaging out to be on the trajectory that we were expecting. So we're not growing beyond what we expect, at least not yet. If this keeps up like, at this rate for another seventeen years, uh, yeah, then we'll, we'll, we will need to make some adjustments along the way. But right now, we're well within the bounds of what we're expecting as far as growth. So, uh, the, the problems on Cook Road is, is a regional issue that the SCADIT, uh, the, the, uh, SCADIT Council of Governments, which is the, the regional transportation agency, address, they take their work very seriously, too. They actually, every time a city, uh, does any transportation plan updates, you know, the transportation element, for example, is, is our transportation plan, SCOG, the SCADIT Council of Governments, actually reviews those and puts it all together and with the other jurisdictions to make sure that everybody's working in concert, um, to go, uh, to, to grow in such a way. Now, there's definitely problems on Cook Road, and we can look into what, um, what the, the city, well, I'm sorry, what the, the state and the county are doing and the regional planning agencies are doing to address that. Uh, perhaps that will help with this conversation, but, um, you know, all of our planning documents are, anticipated this growth that we're experiencing, and while it seems like a lot right now, we're, um, it, we are within the bounds of what the city is planned for and prepared to address. And, you know, that's why we have traffic impact fees and, um, and school impact fees and, uh, park impact fees. So as we see more people coming here, we can then build the facilities to accommodate those new people. That's why we're building, the city has been working on this Jones John liner Trail Road corridor, is to improve traffic through town as we expected growth for the next twenty years. And so that's part of, you know, that, that arterial alignment that I was describing earlier is, uh, intended to alleviate the traffic congestion. It's just a big project and it takes time. And with this new development, every new house pays certain amount into the traffic impact fees, and those traffic impact fees are used for things like acquiring, uh, road right-of-ways and paying for the construction of new roads on these new arterials that are intended to, uh, reduce the traffic impacts. So that's my spiel.
Well, that's, it's, it... I heard an echo. Um, John, thank you for that, and I, and I think the city and you, planning committee, everybody's doing a very fine job, uh, within the city. Um, the roads are being improved, the schools, everything, the infrastructure's being improved, but as soon as you hit the city limits, nobody wants to help. And I guess that's, if I had, if there was somebody from the state or county that would address this and say, "We're on your side, we wanna get you to the freeway within, you know, the next, you know, extra hour of commuting, you know, we're on your side". But that's, I need to hear that one of these days from somebody outside the city.
You see, I agree with you on that. You know, when I first started as a planning commissioner way back in nineteen ninety-eight, when I first discovered that we had this whole comprehensive plan process, Growth Management Act in the state of Washington, it only accounted for what's happening here. So like, Cook Road is an example, which is a great example, we're getting a massive amount of industrial traffic that comes off of Highway nine, that funnels down to twenty, that tails off the Cook sometimes, stays on twenty. And now you have a, having a traffic and industrial traffic coming out of the, uh, the eastern portion up towards concrete. So all this stuff hits Little Sunny Seidra Willie, that I refer to this town as, and you're right, it creates, creates quite a problem, because these are massive vehicles on top of the fact that, you know, we, we just have a whole bunch of lights and things like that, so yeah, it's, it's a problem. But anyway, the Buckos, I apologize for keeping them up, and, uh, I believe it's time to move on unless anybody else has anything else to add. But I, again, we appreciate it, thank you.
I like the fact you're putting the road from FNS Grade to Cook. Thank you, that, that's a big improvement, and if you're behind that, thank you, Bucko family.
So Sarah, Sarah and/or Laura, uh, please feel, now's your time to speak, sorry to take so long to get to you.
No, that's okay, that's okay. Those are all really, um, great comments to hear. I, and, you know, I understand the traffic, which is, you know, part of, um, our, another, I know John gave a little bit of a background, um, on, um, this property, um, but we...
I think, I think that's, Sarah, I think that's you. Can you, can you identify who you are? We actually can't tell.
Oh, yeah, it's Sarah, it's, it's Sarah Bucko. Um, so, sorry, it's, yeah, it looks a little dark. So we, when we first, when we initially submitted this comp plan amendment, um, our project looked a little different. Um, we did not have an arterial, um, going through our panhandle. Um, we, the arterial, we were going to dedicate a portion of land for the arterial, but the arterial was going to go through the school district property. Um, you know, that got... You know, that got changed. There was a scoping study and they decided it needed to be moved. So we are donating 1.6 acres of land, dedicating that for the arterial. So it's quite, you know, a chunk of land that we're dedicating. And not only that, as we went back and had to completely redo our design. So we have been working with the city on, you know, getting, making sure that this arterial happens because if we didn't do this land dedication, you know, it would be a different story. You know, that being said, I think, I don't know who it was that was talking about the 75 units that would be for the, for the R15 zone that, you know, would be on this property or on this zone. Earlier, when you were, when you were talking to Bob Ruby, you were saying, hey, I think you're doing a downgrade because mixed commercial, you can get, you know, eight units per building, you know, how many buildings you could get on a, you know, on three acres? So I, you know, I think you're actually doing a downgrade. I, I, I think we could still get the same amount of units or more with our current zoning. So I don't think that it's, with, with our current zoning, we can still get the density in there that we're talking about. So we're not asking for an increase in density. I, what, I think that what we're asking for is just a change in the type of units that we're, we're being allowed to, to build. And, you know, you guys know, you guys have had these urban village projects coming your way. So you know what's coming in the future. You know, the RJ group has one, BYK has one. So we just don't think that the commercials, if we had to build commercial space, that it would necessarily get utilized. And especially when we've submitted this comp plan amendment, we did not have any frontage to any arterial. We realized that now we, we're going to have a, an arterial going through a small portion of it. But we still think that it would be better to provide this, you know, middle housing, which we don't have. Like you said, the art, they haven't designated any more zones R15. It's still, the code's still there. And, you know, the, the, the code says that, you know, the goal is to maintain the look of conventional neighborhoods and scale orientation to the street style and appearance and to avoid creation of large apartment blocks, separate from other parts of the community. So I think that because we don't have this, we don't have this middle housing, which is a huge problem, not just in Sidro Wully, but in the state of Washington. There's actually, there's, you know, grants available right now for allowing this type of middle housing zoning. And there's, you know, there was a, there, I, I don't know if, you know, you could, there was a, there was a mandatory middle housing bill that didn't get passed, but instead they amended it and provided a, a different house bill that gave incentive for communities to provide this type of middle house.
Can I ask you a question? What, what are you referring to as middle housing? It's a request for an R15, which is basically apartment buildings 35 feet high. What are you referring to as middle housing? I'm, I'm just curious.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, mi- middle housing is, it's just, it's, it's a, it's the in-between, right? So it's the in-between, the, the, the high, the intense high density, which is the urban village, right? Urban village, 35 units per building, right? So that's the, that's our more intense high density zoning that we have in Sidro Wully. And then, and then we have the single family. So it's, it's the bridge, the gap between the single family housing and the more intense high density multifamily housing. It's, it's the middle. So it's, it's really, I mean, we haven't, we haven't had any more of these zones for a long time. So we have the option of, our residents have the option of now, you know, do, and this also, you know, comes, housing affordability comes into this, too, right? We have single family homes, new construction, you know, is going in. You guys know what those prices are. About $550,000 is kind of what the newest construction homes are going for. And then we have apartments being built above commercial space. So we, we hit those two different markets, right? So people that are going to live in those high, higher density apartments that are above commercial spaces, we have those urban villages going in. And we have a lot of single family homes going in. But we don't have this, we don't have this, we don't have these courtyard apartments, walk-up apartments, townhomes that are attached, right? So like eight unit, back four in the front, four in the back type townhomes. We don't, you know, we, we don't have those kind of middle housing. So it's, that's, you know, that's really what we're trying to do is we, if, you know, if we thought that we, if we thought that we needed more commercial space in Sidro Wully, we would go with the mixed commercial zoning and build the commercial space. But we have an urban village going in, you know, across the road from us on Trail Road that's going to have a, you know, a ton of commercial space and 75 units of apartments. We have the other urban village that the RJ group is doing. We're going to have a lot of commercial space in that. There's a lot of commercial space available. If you want a commercial space in Sidro Wully, there's a lot of availability for that right now. But there's not a lot of affordable housing. We're talking somewhere in the middle. So if we were going to sell, you know, it would be, you know, somewhere in the 300 range. If we were going to rent, it would be a more affordable rent, but it, it would be somewhere in between renting a single family home, which you guys know what the rents are going for, $2,500 for, you know, three bedroom home, three bedroom, two bath, modest home in Sidro Wully. And, and, and the apartments are, you know, are, are commanding quite a lot of rent as well. So this is just, you know, what we're talking about is bridging the gap.
Okay, another question, just, just to hold on for a second. It's an R15 zone, so that, that is our highest density zone as far as, the UVMU is a little bit different. I mean, that, that's kind of brand new and, and we get that. But your plan in an R15 is not to max out the R15 is what you're telling me, is you're saying that you're looking to do, and John, we, we had that project that was right next to me on Trail Road. We had those five units that were attached right next to the Smiles Dental on the other side. And so, so that's the kind of stuff you're looking at is like attached, single family in a townhouse style? Can you elaborate a little bit more on that? And then what I do like hearing is no more rentals. Okay? If you're looking to do something that people can actually buy a place, I, I think that would be something that I would like to hear a little bit more about. When, when you're building rentals, it makes for transient communities. People come in, people are going. However, you put something permanent there that they can actually own, that's a totally different animal. So if you can elaborate a little bit more on that, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. And middle housing, and middle housing, you know, and middle housing really needs both. They, you know, they, they're, they need, there's, there needs to be houses that people can own and then there needs to be houses that, that are available to rent. You know, a lot of these, a lot of these middle housings are the stepping stone for, you know, young families to get into those desired neighborhoods that they want to, but they can't quite afford yet. So, you know, this is, if you have a new family moving and, you know, to Sidro Wully and they either have the option of, you know, buying a single family home for $550,000 or renting an apartment, there's just not a lot of, there's just not a lot of middle. And, and, you know, I'm happy to pass on the information about the, the incentive program, the bill. You know, there's, there's definitely, I think that, you know, I, the, the state set aside $5 million. So far, you know, only four something has been applied for. I know that probably all planners are really busy, you know, with dealing with COVID and, and getting back to the office and all of that. So I think that's part of it. But it, it really addresses a, a lot of different issues, but housing affordability is certainly one of them. And, and just, yeah, allowing, allowing more missing middle housing types can just provide more affordable living options and provide it in a way that's compatible with existing neighborhoods. One of the, you know, in the mixed commercial code, it says that commercial development should be scaled down when adjacent to residential areas to, to improve compatibility between uses. And really, this is what we're asking for. We're asking to, you know, improve the compatibility between the single family residential neighborhood that's going in and, you know, the next parcel over, which probably will be apartments above commercial space. But we just want a gradual, and those are the, you know, those are the properties that do, the zones that parcels that do have access, do have frontage to Cook Road. So we're, you know, we're really, I, I think that, I, I don't know how many, John, how many units can I get? And I know that in the mixed commercial zoning, I have a max building height of 60 feet, right? There's an allowance for me to build a 60-foot building.
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, there, so there's an allowance for me to build a 60-foot building next to my residential. But if I did multifamily, the max building height is 35 feet. So I'm, you know, I, I don't think we're really asking for an increase in density like you suggested. It's, it's just a different way of building and a, a, a different type of product. We're not, we don't want to build apartments above retail space. We don't think, we, we don't think that any more retail space needs to go in right now, especially when there's two pending projects going on that have over 10,000 square feet of commercial space anyways. And there's what, like 17 available commercial spaces for rent right now. It just, this is, we're just looking to bridge the gap and provide the community with something that it needs. And, you know, they're, and, and allowing these, more of this type of zoning, this missing, missing middle housing, you know, we might be able, the city might be able to apply or they can apply for, you know, these grants. That's why, you know, Washington passed this incentive program for providing these, this type, the specific type of housing, the specific type, type of zoning. Does anybody have, yeah, does anybody have any questions specifically regarding the, the middle housing that we're asking for?
I don't have any questions. I think you presented your case very well, one of the finest presentations I've heard and I appreciate what you're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that a lot.
Well, it sounds like we don't have any other questions from the planning commission at this point.
I don't.
So.
John, I Paul has a comment if I can have a few seconds.
Uh, well, this is not a public hearing. This is, this is a planning commission discussion, so that would be outside of what, we're going to have a public hearing on this soon. So sorry to shut you down, Paul. I know we don't like to do that, but this is a formal meeting that has, has some boundaries on it.
No problem.
I guess, Sarah, I did want to ask you, just to clarify, so this is very standard, traditional R15 multifamily. There's no sort of, it wouldn't be classified as affordable housing as such, correct?
Yeah. I mean, affordable housing is just, you know, it, it's a, a public, it, it's, we're building, I mean, they're, they're private. So, I mean, I, I, I guess you can look at the term affordable housing in two ways. I know I shouldn't say affordable housing because everyone's mind goes there. Reasonably cost, you know, reasonably priced housing, I guess I should say. But no, not traditionally, not affordable, we're not talking about like Section 8, if that's what you're asking.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We wouldn't have that latitude, we wouldn't have that latitude, by the way, anyway. So once, once you put something in it, it's up to the owner to decide what, what they want and don't want to do. So the, I guess the, the bottom line is if you get a rezone, it, it's up to you to do whatever you want to do within the scope of the code. So, so, so that, that's pretty much it.
Yeah. And I think, yeah, I think if you're building, I mean, I think that there's a lot of incentive out there to, to provide that type of housing. But no, that's, and we have to apply for and all that stuff. But no, that's not what we're, that's, that's not our intent. Our intent is to, obviously that's needed, but our, our intent is to, to bridge the gap between the apartments and the, you know, six, five, 600,000 dollar homes.
Here's what happens sometimes, life happens, right? So you get a rezone and there's nothing keeping you at the table. In essence, you can take that property now and sell it off to somebody else and they can do whatever it is that they want to do within the scope of the code. And a lot of times that is a concern because it's happened before. We've had people come on in, they, they press for a certain thing, we think it's a good idea, and then at the end of the day, it gets transferred over to somebody else. So I'm just saying it happens everywhere. As a matter of fact, I do a lot of vacant land in my practice and it's very standard on most vacant land purchase and sale agreements that you'll have a, a name of somebody and then you'll always have and/or signs because it does give that individual the ability to sell it to somebody else. So anyway, I'm not saying that you have any ulterior motives whatsoever. I'm just letting you know that that's the way it works sometimes, that's all.
Yeah, I definitely understand. And I think that if that's what our intention was and that's what we wanted to do, we would have sold the property already. We would have, we, you know, we have 25 acres, we would have done it.
Yeah, but at a different, hang on a second, at a different, at a different zoning, I'm telling you right now, zoning is gonna, gonna basically set what a price of something is, just, just throwing it out there.
Yeah. You know, I, all of this is, all of this has been a legacy project for us. So it's, we're, it's very emotionally tied. It's, we're not, you know, career developers. I'm a pediatric nurse and a lactation consultant. So that's, you know, what my day job is. So this is, you know, my sister's in sales. And so we, this is really a legacy project for my grandfather. He has been there at meetings and probably bugged John Coleman way too many times trying to do some sort of development, residential development. And, you know, kind of handed this over to us and said, will you do this for me? Because I couldn't figure it out. And so that was, so, you know, he's passed away now and this is, you know, this is something that we told him we were doing on his deathbed. So this is a, this is an emotional project for us. It's a legacy project. It's not, if we wanted to sell it to the highest bidder, believe me, we could have done it. We've had lots of offers, but we, we didn't, that's, that's, that was not our intention. We wanted to be very purposeful about how we planned this community. We really wanted to bring a neighborhood. We had intention on the whole flow of it.
You know, what's good, too, is John's the Teflon Planning Director, so it just slides right off him. So whatever your grandfather threw at him, he's seen worse. Thank you. If you have anything else to add, there'll be, you know, this will be a continuing process and don't get frustrated, but it is a process and people are going to be asking questions. So, so anyway, thank you. And we look forward to hearing more about your project and your thoughts in the future. Does anybody have any questions for the Buckos? Does anybody have any questions for the Buckos? So with that, John, is there anything else you would like to share with us before I adjourn the meeting?
Well, I'd like to clarify where to go with this next.
Okay, great, yeah.
I may surprise you.
Not Teflon?
I think over the next week, I, what I'd like to do is get this out for a public hearing next time also, if that sounds okay for the Planning Commission. But it kind of depends on how long it takes to put a staff report together with, and if, I got, I need to check the procedural steps to make sure that I'm not skipping over anything. So I can't, I can't with any definitiveness say that I can get it on next month's Planning Commission agenda for a public hearing, but that'll be my goal. I, I need to look at the procedural stuff. The other, the Ruby rezone, we went through all the procedural stuff, so we've got everything tidied up and, and pretty much, or had a bow on it from last year. So that one I can move through fairly easily, but this one I need to, I need to check the procedural stuff.
You know, you've had a lot on your plate, and there's a lot going on, so I don't think it's going to offend anybody if it pushes out a meeting after that. I mean, we, we have a lot of things coming up in the next meeting. We, we still have to address the parking issue, and that's going to be a long discussion. And it sounds like this seems to be a fairly significant project as well, so I'd prefer that you have time to think it through and not feel like somebody's got a gun to your head and, you know.
Sometimes you just have to say no.
Right, sometimes you have to say no, exactly.
Yeah, I do spend a lot of my time apologizing to people that I'm so far behind. So, but I, I, I don't know that that would be the case as much as, I, I think there's just procedural things that I need to, to check on, to make sure before, but I appreciate the, the space to bring this to a later one. So that being the case, unless I discover anything that seems, needs to be brought to the Planning Commission previous to any other public hearings, I'll plan on having, not having this on the agenda next month, and unless I can, like, rush through a public hearing on it. But I, I, I think there's some procedural steps that's going to prevent that from happening. So let's just plan on this being November meeting.
We have a lot to look at as well, on some pretty large projects on top of that. So it's not only combined on what staff has to produce and look through and evaluate, it's also what we have to take a look at as well to make sure we're making informed, good decisions that we really try very hard to do.
Okay.
Okay, I make, will someone make a motion to adjourn? You can speak now, I believe.
I move to adjourn.
Second?
Real quick, John, I wanted to ask you, will the design guidelines be coming back to the next meeting, or is that on hold?
I don't want to put it on hold, but I, I just think out of necessity, I, I don't have the time to dedicate to, to, to that project with all the other things going on. So it's probably going to get pushed to further months, but it is not far from my mind, and it's just a matter of having, there, there's a lot of, where we left it, there's a lot of work to be done on that. And it's, it's pretty much all in our, in staff's hands right now, and staff's hands are pretty full.
Danielle, I apologize. I thought we were done.
No, that's fine.
Okay, would somebody like to second the motion to adjourn?
I will second the motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:26 tonight. Thank you.